A strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. Where am I at here? Now I just lost my place. This meeting in Northborough School Committee, Southborough School Committee, Northborough, Southborough Regional School Committee, Superintendent Union Number Three School Committees will conduct via remote participation to the greatest extent possible, specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members, the public, and the parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on district website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch this meeting may do so in the following manner. I believe we're an NCAT Educational Channel Verizon Channel 29, Charter Channel 194, or SAM Government Channel Verizon Channel 37, Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we made through the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So we'll go right into the agenda. The first thing is a COVID-19 health information update.
Susan, just one order of business. Should we have the Southborough Chair call the meeting to order?
Yeah, I called Union and Northborough. So we're going to Southborough and Region.
I'll call the Region.
All right, I'll call the Southborough. Meeting to order.
Great.
So the two items on the agenda this evening are discussion and action, April vacation, and also the superintendent illness contingency plan. So the first item really is around the change in calendar. Due to the pandemic, the plan originally is to continue through 180 days in session. When you approved the 2019-20 calendar, you approved 185-day calendar with five days of snow days or contingency days. This year thus far, before the pandemic, we had three snow days. And then we had March 13th off due to COVID-19. So that leaves the last day of the school year for the 2019-20 as June 22nd, 2020. And because of the commissioner changing the regulations, any day that is taken off after March 15th does not need to be made up. It was a part of the emergency provisions that were put into place. So really, the conversation is we've obviously been out of school for several weeks now. We've launched NSboro Connect 2.0 on Monday. And in a couple of weeks, we have April vacation scheduled. And there's been a lot of discussion around, do we hold April vacation as scheduled, or do we continue remote learning? The Commissioner of Education did weigh in on whether if districts continued remote learning during April vacation, if the days would count toward 185 days. And his position was they would. So many districts around the Commonwealth are entering into a conversation around what's the best solution for April vacation. If the committee votes this evening not to hold April vacation, the last day of school would be Tuesday, June 16th. We still would have Monday off Patriots' Day of April vacation because it is a legal holiday. And then we'd have remote learning on Tuesday through Friday. So as part of this discussion tonight, as you know, we did survey faculty, staff, as well as community members. And I will share with you the survey results. And I'll first start with the results from faculty and staff. We had 431 faculty and staff complete the survey. And the options were to hold April vacation as scheduled or conduct remote learning during April vacation. 14.6% of the people who participated in the survey voted to hold April vacation as scheduled. And then 85.4% voted to conduct remote learning during April vacation. So those are the results from faculty and staff. From parents, I shared with you the initial results. So since the data I shared with you, we've had more participants. So we had 2,023 people participate in the survey, families and parents. 14.8% selected the option of hold April vacation as scheduled. And 85.2% voted to conduct remote learning during April vacation. And I will share with you that when you disaggregate the data by district, the results are mirror these results in aggregate. So the data was pretty compelling. But I guess it's really, it's the purview of the school committees. And I would entertain a discussion to decide whether to hold April vacation or to continue remote learning.
So Greg, I'd be happy to kick this one off. I mean, the data is overwhelming. The students have been out of school for quite some time now. And as we know, there hasn't been a lot of work that was done during the first number of weeks that they were off. To have them take another week off in two weeks, to me, doesn't seem to make any sense. And as you just showed us, the data is overwhelming as to what the parents and others would ask for. So I mean, to kick things off, I mean, honestly, I will move for the region that we conduct remote learning during school vacation.
I actually, I agree with Dan. I think even talking to Ella today, I think that they expected to have school during April vacation. You know, so it wasn't, it's not, I don't think for the kids, it's, I think it's easier for them because they've already been doing it. So to just continue doing it and making it smooth versus choppy at this point.
I would say that I took an NSPAC meeting today with Greg and with Kelly. Those folks, because it's so very complicated in many ways, are just getting on board. It would be very, very disruptive to our vulnerable students to try to take time off again. So I concur with eliminating the April vacation this year.
Greg, I have a question. In your brief remarks, you mentioned that Patriots' Day is a holiday here in Massachusetts. So when we talk about April vacation, are we talking about those five days or just Tuesday through Friday, four days?
So it'd be Tuesday through Friday.
Okay.
I agree with all of the above, and I'll make the same motion for Southborough.
Second?
I'll make the same motion for Northborough.
Second for Northborough. And I did want to also add comments from a public health lens. I do think that it's important to continue with schooling. I have just a worry that if we don't hold April vacation, it might give kids the sense of freedom to go hang out with friends. And I would just really worry that their health would be at stake. So from a health perspective and an educational perspective, I definitely second that motion.
So it's funny, like even so on your point, and I don't think that the kids would necessarily go hang out with their friends, but I think what was really nice for them is that when they're doing their Zoom classes, they get to see their friends. And they get to see kids that they just, I think that they're dying for that and they don't get it. And this is something that's really helpful for them mentally.
I agree. I was at the same NSPAC meeting as Kathleen and Kelly this afternoon and agree with Kathleen's comments about, you know, clearly they're very supportive of continuing. And I don't think we can argue with how, I guess, consistent all the polling was, not only in all the districts, but from, you know, both constituents groups.
Yeah, I was going to make the same similar comment as Roger, that I think that given the survey feedback, both from families and from teachers. And I mean, the fact that everyone, you know, the overwhelming majority is really expressing a preference to keep going. That does it for me. I mean, I was torn personally because I really can see both sides of it. I could go either way, but I think that given the feedback, it makes a lot of sense just to keep going.
I agree. I mean, I was in the minority of wanting to have April vacation because we, in our household, we did all the virtual learning or the optional learning. So, you know, my kids have felt like they've been steadily in school and could use a break. But with the overwhelming majority wanting to continue, and I can totally understand the reasons to continue, I'm fine with that.
Greg, I'm wondering if you could, if there are any qualitative data points, you know, comments from either faculty, staff, or families that I guess would support our motion or anything that you feel valuable to share.
Yeah, and I think that I will share that there were a number of comments from the survey results. And most of the comments were about, you know, several families feeling overwhelmed with remote learning and, I think, just in general with the pandemic and two working families trying to educate their children at the same time. So most of the comments, the qualitative data was surrounding those types of challenges. I think that one, my comment to that is we will work with families if families feel like it's too challenging. We're encouraging families to reach out to the teachers and building principals and will adjust and accommodate to support families' context in their homes. I think from a teacher's perspective, a lot of the feedback was many, and I agree with this position, many educators do not feel like we will return on May 4th. That social distancing will remain in effect and that will be a gradual release. Therefore, to have April vacation and then to continue remote learning and then learn that the closure is extended for another period of time. Most teachers thought it made sense to continue. And the other anecdotal information that people shared is they don't have much, many plans for April vacation. So they are not traveling, they're home, and they're looking forward to brighter days in June where they hopefully can leave their house and hopefully enjoy life returning to normal.
Greg, I have a question about the June. One of the things that came up, a discussion some people reached out to me about was, is there a possibility to have a third option to vote on to basically keep, get rid of the April vacation, but extend its keep to the June 22nd? Because there's been so much of a loss of learning up to this point. It was optional learning up to the previous week. And so some people were wondering, is that a possible scenario that would make more sense, seeing that, you know, there is the option, there is the potential that we will not be returning?
Wouldn't there be collective bargaining issues with that?
Exactly. So I think we have our, you know, seven associations. It would be a change of working conditions. So.
Isn't all of this a change of working conditions? Again, I'm just trying to get the information for everybody that's out there.
So we did, we do have a memorandum of understanding or agreement for this closure. We do not have a memorandum of agreement to extend the school year. I will share that teachers have been working really hard. They have, this is by no means time off for them. And remote learning is much more difficult than teaching in person. Planning remote sessions takes a lot of time and energy. So it would be a significant change of working conditions to extend the year and extend the days. And ultimately, what we'd have to do is probably is compensate teachers for that additional time if that were the will of the committee. But my recommendation is to not go in that direction and to have June 16th as the last day of the school year.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So Greg, the only other feedback that I saw too was that parents wanted more time per class.
For which grade?
For high school? For high school kids, yeah. Well, for, I mean, for some, for, yeah, I think for Rosa High School, I think it was, or Middle School.
So we're still trying to calibrate NSboro Connect 2.0. We received a lot of feedback from families, which is very helpful from NSPAC, from educators. So, you know, it feels like we've been doing this for a long time, but we are four days in. And we will be revisiting this as a leadership team and talking about, okay, what's working, what's not working? What are parents sharing with us? How can we adjust to support families? And then I'm always mindful too that our educators are also living this with their own families. That many of our educators have young children at home. And they're juggling this pandemic as, as most of our families are in our communities. So it's been a struggle and challenge for them as well. It has not been easy. But we are looking at, Kathy, we are looking at all of those, you know, potential modifications to NSboro Connect 2.0. But I think I shared this last night at the Southborough School Committee. I can guarantee you that there will not be NSboro Connect 3.0.
I just had a couple of comments. Back to the teachers. I was pleasantly surprised at how many of them were on board with continuing educating through April vacation. I mean, as Katura alluded to, if I had any reservation myself, that was it, that, you know, while for the first three weeks, I guess, of this, that we've been out of school, you know, behind the scenes, they were getting ready for NSboro 2.0, and I'm sure putting a lot of work into it. So if anyone could have used a break, I would have thought it would be them, but they overwhelmingly supported forging ahead, which, you know, I think is a, they deserve applause for that. And of course, I expected no less, having known them all these years. But the other thing, what you were just saying, Greg, I mean, how do we assess, you know, what's working, what isn't in this kind of situation?
So I think, I think there's no, there, this is all new for all of us in terms of assessing the effectiveness. Some of it will be anecdotal and qualitative in terms of making sure we collect data around what worked well, what didn't, what were the challenges? Collecting data from our students, particularly at the middle school and high school levels, what worked well for them? What did they learn from this that, you know, would inform our practices in the future? And then finally, just speaking with families. And again, seeing what worked. And then looking at some metrics, you know, looking at our, some of our assessment data, you know, some of, some of the assessment data, we may not have, for example, podcasts and so forth. But if we do return to session this year, one of the things that educators will be focused on is assessing students to see where they are and what gaps exist due to this extended closure. It does feel a lot like we're starting the school year again with this launch of NSboro Connect 2.0. And if we come back to school this year, it's going to feel like we're launching the school year again. There's going to be a lot, a lot of details that will need to be planned out and mapped out to open up again.
Greg, it sounds like there's some plans to survey, which is great because I've seen a lot of great data coming back from parents in other districts about, with surveys about how long it's taking, what challenges the families are having, you know, to navigate or where the kids are having to navigate. So that's good to hear that there's going to be some data collection.
Are there any other discussion points on this topic? We have motion on the table for all the committees. I'll just go back over and see what I've got written down. I've got Dan moving for Region Paul. Bucka seconding for Region Paul Desmond moving for Southborough. I missed who seconded for Southborough.
This is Roger.
Roger did, okay. And then Joan motion for Northborough and Keith seconded for Northborough. I don't believe we need a union vote, do we not? Greg?
No, we don't.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead with the roll call for that vote. Okay, let's see who's on our meeting here. We've got Kelly.
Yes.
Yes. Kathleen. Police scope. Katara.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Sean. Oh, you're muted, Sean.
Yes.
There you go. Kathleen Howland.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that motion passes that we will not go forward with April vacation this year. And the end of school, you said, was going to be June 16th?
Correct.
All right. And we have that Monday, the big Patriots' Day will be off.
Correct. All right, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Superintendent Illness Contingency Plan. And I can assure you, I feel well. Many of you asked if I was not feeling well. But this actually, this policy is probably long overdue. I know many years ago, we did have a superintendent unexpectedly pass, which was, which was very tragic. And then just thinking about the COVID-19 and it has no boundaries of who the virus can make sick. So if I were to get sick, what would be the contingency plan? So I did ask a few other superintendents in the area if they had any policies around this. And this policy actually is one that Dr. Sawyer, the superintendent in Shrewsbury, just voted with his committee. And the proposed policy is really establishing establishment of an acting superintendent, G350. This has been reviewed by legal counsel and there were no recommendations. And I know it's not typical that we would vote a policy at a first read. But then again, these are not typical times. And we just asked for discussion around the will of the committee for this policy.
And Greg, has the policy been reviewed by counsel?
Yes, it has.
Sue and Greg, I had three, three points here. The first one was, just for clarification, is for this one, and we go forward in years coming. In paragraph two, three, and five, when you talk about, if you go to paragraph two, the last line, and when you say may choose to convene and vote, I think we have to be specific and say convene in open session. Leave it just that way. I think as we get off the committee, people may, is that executive session or is that open session? So that was one correct, one thing I'd like to add was at number two at the last line. And number three, paragraph three, next to the last line, in emergency, open session if necessary. Add the word open in number three. And the same would follow through for number five, paragraph five. And that would be the fourth line, convene in open session.
Okay.
So Joan, that's more limiting. So why, what's the rationale?
My rationale was because people may say, well, do we do this in open session or do we do it in executive session? And I would think that, you know, anytime we do this, even if we are in executive session, we have to take the vote in open session. So it just makes it a little more clear for future committee members, where do we do this? It, we don't have the ambiguity where, okay, when does this happen? Is it an open session or is it an executive session? I thought we could make it a little clearer.
There are only limited numbers of reasons you can have executive session, I assume, or outlined somewhere. I don't know if this would fall within it or not. I would assume not.
I'm not sure about that. I would think it's, you know, when you're discussing personnel, if you have more than one person, you're trying to weigh against that, I'm not sure, but it could be an executive session kind of discussion.
And I'm wondering if that's why it was left without that limiting factor in there.
Yeah, I think if Joan's point is correct, that if you have a vote in executive session, then you need to have it in an open session anyway. I'm not sure that this change would make sense.
Okay, then, I can see that because since we do have that policy of, you know, we have to come back out into executive session to vote it in an open session, maybe that would precede it. And that would maybe make the ambiguity that I thought of makes it clear. So I could, that's fine if you don't want to put the open session in those three parts.
Yeah, I would agree with not putting it, Joan. I think you're exactly right that it does, you do start in an open session. And then, and again, I think this is going to be some extraordinary circumstances. We would likely review the advice of counsel on how best to do this. We would open an open session, and if the advice was that we need to move to executive session, we would do that. If it could be handled in open session, every meeting that can be an open session should be. I would suggest leaving that out because we may not have the ability to conduct it in an open session.
Okay. And then Greg, you mentioned, Sue, can I follow up?
Yep.
Okay. Greg, you mentioned that this would be a combined policy, one of the first ones?
Yeah, it'd be superintendency number three.
Okay. And I know in, in past policies, sometimes we reference Mass General Law and other policies. And in looking through it, I just found B290 in Northborough and Southborough. I didn't know if we wanted to reference these, since you said it's combined. Now I'm like, I don't know if it would be. But school committee meetings, B290 in Northborough and Southborough, they both talk about special meetings, notice for special meetings, and emergency meetings. I didn't know if you thought that we should, at the end of this policy, just reference those two. Regional doesn't have, I couldn't find one for the region.
So I think similar to the conversation around, you know, convening an open session, then moving to executive session. I think that there are only a few reasons we can have special meetings and emergency meetings. And that is covered in Mass General Law. I mean, we could reference these, the two policies for Southborough and Northborough, but I'm not sure it's necessary. We could, we could reference the Mass General Law around reasons to have special meetings and emergency meetings.
Okay, yeah, because in the proposed policy here for G350 and paragraph 30, paragraph three, it talks about an emergency session. So that's the only reason if I, I thought maybe we just had to, I was just throwing it out. I didn't know what the will of the committee was.
But let me ask, but let me ask this question. If an emergency session is necessary, don't we, aren't we really obligated to follow Mass General laws anyway? I mean, I'm just trying to determine, I'm trying to determine if adding such language actually changes this in any way. Because if not, I'm kind of not in favor of just adding more language.
I agree with you.
I did too. We'd have to follow the rules, whatever the rules were, you know, it's, I mean, we can call the session whatever we call, we choose to call it. But, you know, whatever, whatever the laws, you know, handcuff us with, you know, those are the laws and we will follow them. And if we don't, then, you know, kind of shame on us and, you know, we'll have to go back and do it properly. I have a different question if I could. Greg, you said this came from Shrewsbury. Does Shrewsbury have an assistant superintendent?
Yeah, so they, they have a few.
Why that person not just almost de facto the?
So one of the, so I think one of, so they do have a couple of superintendents, assistant superintendents in Shrewsbury. I think because we've done some restructuring, you know, we have an HR director, we have a director of finance, and a director of operations, and assistant superintendent, we've been able to. We've been able to segment the superintendent, assistant superintendent's role to more curriculum instruction and assessment. So depending on what would happen, it might make sense to appoint maybe the finance director as the interim assistant superintendent, or the director of operations as the superintendent in these particular cases.
It seems, it seems like this, this approach enables the school committees to really evaluate the specific situation. Because such an, such an event could occur for a variety of reasons. And it may be that one reason, you know, would lend itself to a certain individual. And another reason might lend itself to another individual. So I think this gives the school committees a chance to, you know, I think, I think make that decision.
None of my flexibility, Roger. I mean, I think that makes some sense. I just, I mean, up until right this minute, it had never crossed my mind that, that we were looking at those other positions as, as on par with the assistant. I mean, we've historically always looked at the assistant superintendent as the, you know, kind of the relatively obvious successor if we, if we are comfortable with that person's performance over their, over their tenure. I think I just heard from Greg that, in fact, something, sometime in the future, it may in fact be more of a toss-up, which, you know, I almost wonder if we're, if we should be reconsidering titling of that position. If we really think that it's going to be a toss-up. But that's maybe a conversation for a different day, but you know, when I first saw this, I thought, the only reason we really need this is because we don't have, you know, a full-time, permanent assistant superintendent. But it sounds like, Greg, you've, you've got a kind of a different point of view on this.
So I think Shrewsbury, they, so I did talk to the superintendent around why, you know, the rationale behind this policy. They have an assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. They have an assistant superintendent to business. They have an assistant superintendent, they have different layer, different assistant superintendents and roles. So essentially, we have that same model. They're just not called assistant superintendents. They're called directors. Our directors have assistant, have, for the most part, licensure around superintenancy. They could be superintendents. They're licensed to do that work.
Greg, I have a question. Would you then, would it be the responsibility of the superintendent to have a list of recommended people to be an acting superintendent? Like, maybe that could be one of the things. So then that would be in the case that the superintendent is unavailable to make the decision. We, as the committee, would have an informed decision on which position would best fit the absence of the superintendent serving?
The way I was looking, the way I was viewing it is, to Paul, Paul Bucka's point, I agree that, you know, the assistant superintendent most likely would be the person that would be the next person to take on the position. But to Roger's point, there might be circumstances where, you know, that it might not make sense, depending on the.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. So like, for example, the director of finance would be, or director of operation might be better suited for the interim position for the time. But so would you or the superintendent, would they provide who they would think would be the best? Because the committee, we might, we don't know the day in and, you know, ins and outs of what's going on. So I could see that being a helpful.
It's actually listed in point two, that the superintendent shall name a qualified administrator.
But I'm, I'm saying is what if he's unable to make that decision? And the time that needs to, like, if there was a freak accident, for example.
So you want, you want a list that we can.
So if there was a prepared positions, I think that would be helpful. For example, like the example Greg said, when the superintendent passed away suddenly. You know, something like that. Obviously, they couldn't name their, you know, interim.
So you're looking for something more of like a chain of command situation? Like that, not per se that, but a list of,
Yeah.
like your top three or four administrators that you would look at, whether it be operations, finance, HR.
Yeah, maybe the benefits of.
Name those positions within the policy.
Yeah. And again, it doesn't necessarily have to be in this policy, but if it was in practice or if it was kind of known that this is a list that's provided to whomever, you know, in the case that, you know, you couldn't, or the seated, the seated superintendent couldn't decide.
So I do think that, just to comment around, I think it's, obviously, this is, would be a new policy. And I would need to engage in conversations with the leadership team at central office and have a plan in place. So that everyone knew what would happen and what their roles would be. So I've not had those conversations yet, but would, would plan on having a succession plan of some sort that is well mapped out. And people knew what would happen if there was some type of emergency. Again, this is a rare, this is, this is the worst-case scenario. Unfortunately, this did happen in our district. And this just gives us some guidelines to follow.
And I will make the, I would suggest that we, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve the, the policy as provided. I think it's a great idea, Greg, that you have those discussions. I think it's a very slippery slope. If those discussions then turned into something that was a definitive list of names and roles, you cannot imagine the difference. Yeah, I guess you could spend a lot of time trying to guess what the various scenarios could be. And the personnel would be at the time, but, you know, we also know that personnel change. So you may, you may have one person in mind, and then, because they have a certain skill set. And then, six months later, that person is either left the district or a different role. And, you know, you're, you, I don't know if you want to be constantly updating, hopefully will never be used. But I think it's wise to have the discussion, but I'll make the motion for the region that we approve the superintendent's succession plan policy as provided in our.
Before we go any further, I had one potential change. The very last line, the policy will be reviewed within five years, oh, within five years, okay. Never mind. I was going to say, it might make sense to review it like within a year, in a year, given, you know, we are kind of circumventing our usual procedure.
I, I agree with Paul there. I was thinking the same thing.
I'll make the motion for Northborough to accept this policy as a combined policy.
Paul, is there some, I'm sorry, I'll wait for the second for Northborough.
Second for Northborough.
Paul, is there some specific language that you are recommending? Just change five to one, or?
I, I think we're okay with five as it is. You know, I was kind of misreading it. I thought it'll be reviewed in five years, which I thought would have been a long time. But within five years, you know, obviously, it could be any time in there. So as long as we're mindful of that, I think it does deserve to be reviewed sooner rather than later.
I'll make, I'll make the motion for Southborough to accept it as written. And I, and I agree with, with Paul. There, there's, there's no way that Greg can predict every eventuality. You know, so there is a, you know, how likely, I don't know, but certainly some, some likely possibility that there's just going to be some eventuality that you can't forecast. And it does say that he would recommend someone. It turns out that he can't. And I guess school committees got to do their best.
I'll second for Southborough, and I think we still need a motion for the union. I'll move for the union as well.
I'll second for the union.
Sue, as a point of process, just as we did the last time, because this is remote participation. And for anybody who's viewing it, when we take our votes, can we go down by the four committees? In whatever order you want to do, so that the people can hear what committee is voting and what members they are. Because the last one we did, my vote probably went for two committees. And I only voted once.
Okay. How about I just name the person in the committees?
Perfect.
They're on, and as they vote. Would that help? It could be different for different committees. I imagine your vote might be the same if you're on multiple committees, but maybe not. I don't know.
No, it would be the same. You know, because the last time when Kathy did it, she mentioned like Northborough and went down the list, and Southborough, the region. I just think it helps the viewers.
Definitely. I'm kind of going by my screen here with my list of little faces and just going through it that way. So I'll try my best to go in the best order I can. If I miss anybody, please let me know.
So before we vote, you know, just to continue the discussion a little bit, if I could. So Greg, you know, we're in the, we're in the process of interviewing for an assistant superintendent. Is it? I mean, I'm, I'm still, I'm still back to, you know, the whole, gee, we think that there were two or three other positions that are kind of at equal level to that position. I mean, it's a, is that, is that clear in the, in the job description? And, and the information that we're providing to the applicants that, that, you know, this isn't the, as it has been in the past, kind of the obvious successor position to your job?
So I think we have, we did update the job description. Heather, if you want to speak to that.
Yes, so the, the job description really details more teaching and learning emphasis than it previously had.
I just, I will comment though, Paul. I mean, I think obviously the candidate, I mean, we, part of the operation, obviously, I'm, will seek to hire an assistant superintendent who can compete for the position of superintendent when it opens. So I'm looking for someone with a broad skill set. One of the things we're trying to do at central offices is not have people work across this large continuum of responsibilities and give them a little bit more focus. But that does not mean that the assistant superintendent will not be able to step into that role if needed. And we absolutely would be looking for a candidate who could step into that position and assume responsibilities. But I also think, I also know, and I know I can't predict the future of who will be in what positions. But I also know that we have a very talented central office leadership team right now. And we're very fortunate. And there, there is a high level of expertise within central office right now to be able to step into an interim position and take over if, if needed in an emergency situation.
Paul, are you, are you concerned, are you concerned that, that leaving flexibility in this would result in the school committee turning down Greg's recommendation or, or an assistant superintendent as the first choice? I'm, I'm wondering what you're concerned about.
So mostly, Roger, my concern is, you know, I mean, historically, we've, we've kind of looked at the assistant superintendent as a, as a kind of, you know, superintendent-in-waiting sort of position. And if we're not looking at it that way anymore, because there are two other director-level positions that we consider, you know, equally potentially qualified, then maybe we shouldn't be calling this position assistant superintendent. Maybe we should be calling it director of whatever it is he or she is director of. And, and then it becomes very clear that we've got some competition for the position. And if for some reason we pick one of those directors to succeed Greg, you know, it, it's almost such a, such a public slap in the face to the assistant superintendent that we're going to end up with two openings. And, you know, I, I don't know that we necessarily want that to happen either, so.
I'm not exactly sure how we got on this topic, but.
Yeah, I'm not either.
No, I mean, a motion has been made. I agree to your point earlier, Paul. It's probably a discussion for another time.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we've got a pretty darn good policy that has been, that has been motioned for approval, seconded by, I think, by every committee at this point.
Paul, I, I want to say.
Now we opened it up for discussion, do we not? I mean, so the discussion was, there's a, there's a, maybe a different sort of wording if we had an assistant superintendent in, in place, was the conversation.
Yeah, and Paul, I totally see where you're coming from, and I, I think we should discuss this in the future. I really do.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you, Paul. I think it should be discussed in the future, but I don't think it's part of this, this policy. I don't, I, I can't imagine we want to try to rewrite this policy with words that could take that future possibility into effect.
And I don't think that this policy is intended in any way to suggest that we change the definition or qualifications for an assistant superintendent that we already have.
No, I, I mean, I'm just saying, I was, my position was, my point of view was, we're giving this particular policy an awful lot of legs that maybe it didn't deserve if we had the assistant position filled. You know, that historically, by definition, we would know what the succession was. And what we're, what we're saying here now is, because we've got multiple people potentially to pick from, we need this policy in place. And it just, you know.
Again, I think it's the superintendent that's going to make that pick unless something really dramatic happens to Greg. And, you know, he's looking pretty good today.
I think the policy is just because of our recent situation and the unprecedented times that we're in, that that's why we want to go ahead and do that now. So I understand we need to have these conversations down the road, but nitpicking on it now might not necessarily be the time for that discussion again, unless, you know, Roger was saying, have it down the road. And this will at least get us through the next few months or so, or year or so, until we can come back and revisit it and make it, make a little bit more sense for any other scenarios down the road that aren't our current situation right now. Any other discussion? On the topic? Okay. Do you want to go ahead and go through the motions? Or go through the vote? Okay, we'll go ahead and do that. And Joan suggested I go by committee, so I'll go ahead and we'll do the, make sure I get everybody on here first. We'll go ahead and do the union first. So it would be me, yes. Kelly, I guess she's, yeah, she's, Kelly is for Northborough and union.
Yes.
And then we have Keith for Northborough and union.
Yes.
Then we have, I believe, Paul for South, Southborough and union. A region union? Wait.
Southborough, region, and union.
Oh, you're on all of them, right?
If you want, Sue, maybe we just say ourselves. I mean, if that's easier for you.
Sure, I'm, I was usually trying to go through all my little photo screens, so I'm just trying to do my best to get them in order. All right, so we got, so how about we go just Kathleen for region?
Yes.
Katara for Southborough and union.
Yes.
Kathy for region.
Yes.
And Joan for Northborough and region?
Yes.
All right. Paul Bucka?
Yes.
All right, and Jennifer?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Okay, Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes, for region and Northborough.
And I think I did Keith already, right? You're all set?
Yes.
Okay, Jessica?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Dan, as for Southborough, and Dan.
Yes, for the region.
Okay, I believe we've got everybody with yeses. Right, so the motion passes for the new policy succession plan.
Those were the two agenda items for tonight's meeting.
All right.
So with any other business, I would move to adjourn for the region.
Second.
Great.
I'll move for Southborough.
Second.
I'm Mr. Northborough.
Seconded.
Great. Did we have one for union?
I'll move for union.
Seconded.
So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote again. Susan, do you want to just say our name and we can say who we're voting for? That sounds perfect. I'm just trying to get my screen so I can see everybody, so I know what I'm looking at here, moving it around. Technically not savvy here. Okay. So we have me, Susan Lawrence for union and Northborough, yes. Kelly?
Union and Northborough, yes.
Kathleen P.
Yes, region.
Katara?
Yes, for Southborough and union.
Kathy?
Yes, for Region.
Joan?
Yes, for Northborough and Region.
Paul D.?
Yes, for Southborough, Region, and Union.
Paul B.?
Yes, for the region.
Jennifer?
Yes, for South, Southborough.
Sean?
Yes, for the region.
Kathleen H.?
Yes, for the region.
Lauren?
Yes, for Region and Northborough.
Keith?
Yes, for Northborough and the Union.
Jessica?
Yes, for Southborough.
Roger?
Yes, yes, for Southborough.
And Dan?
Yes, for the region.
All right, so the meeting is a good evening.